I'd like to call the meeting into order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission, February 22nd, 2022, at 6:00 PM meeting. We do have a quorum. First item is to approve the meeting minutes from January 25th, 2022, public hearing, and the January 25th, 2022, regular meeting. Do those in two separate motions. The first motion for public hearing.
Make motion to accept as submitted for the public hearing.
Motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we'll entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes for the January 25th meeting, regular meeting.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Both meeting minutes are approved. Our first item of business under old business has been deferred, moving on to our second item under new business. Preliminary plat, the Ridge, Phase Four, six lots on 2.95 acres requested by Womble and Associates. Property located off Rocky Trail, tax map 14, parcels 41.02, 41.03, and 41.04. R1 load density residential zoning district and R2 medium density residential zoning district, property owned by BNF Development LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. And before I start, I just want to remind everybody, March the 8th is the next special zoning workshop with Melissa Pagler. So that's two weeks from tonight, March the 8th. Starts at 5:30. And I'll send an email out.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. So this is a preliminary plat request for the Ridge. This is Phase Four of the Ridge. And they are wanting to create seven new lots on approximately three acres. And you can see here on the screen, zoom out here. So this is a wider view of the area. And if I'm a pointer here, so this is Carruthers Crossing to the north and northwest. So you can see Carruthers is under construction and then the Ridge, of course, is under construction. So this blue area that's outlined is the subject area for this item. And then there's the close-up view of that area. So the zoning map, you can see on the plat, it's mostly R1. There is a very small section that's R2, which is this darker color. So it's R2 and R1 zoning. And you can see that Carruthers up there to the north and west is PDR, which is the striped area. So that's Carruthers is planned density residential. Here's some site photos. It's kind of up and down out there. It's somewhat hilly there at the Ridge. See different photos there. So only seven lots, and as I mentioned, it's three acres. So this is the latest plat. There's a close-up there of the latest plat. So you can see the comments from the workshop have been incorporated. And one of those is on note number two. There were comments about exactly how many lots they were creating. So it is seven, and they've changed that in note number two. And they also have added setbacks to the lot for the pool house. So they've added, they're showing now both front setbacks, which was a note from two weeks ago. And the building envelopes are also shown on each lot. And also all the comments that Mr. Brown had, those have been taken care of as well. And I know we talked a couple of weeks ago that the lines that they had drawn for the pool and the pool house are just for illustrative purposes. They're not concrete, but they give an idea of where the pool could go and also where the pool house could go. And that's it for this minor plat. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? And I'd like to thank the developer for doing everything we asked.
I appreciate the developer and engineer working all eight items out that were on the workshop, handling all eight that have all been removed and that have been taken care of, and appreciate the head will be moved back between 404 and 405. So with that, I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to our next item. Item number three, site plan. Near Shreveman, live work, seven three-story live work units on .09, .90 acres requested by Womble and Associates. Property located on near Shreveman Boulevard, tax map 15, parcel 13.09. C3 Neighborhood Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Adnan Shreveman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a site plan request for live work development, and it is composed of seven units total. They're all three-story units. And you see here on the map, this area outlined in blue. So this area is right behind the existing KFC restaurant. It's between KFC and Laverne 2000. And currently, property is on C3. Before we do that, let's zoom in. So this is a close-up view of the property. You see Laverne 2000 is here to the right in the photo, or in the image, and then KFC's back here at the corner, Murphy Square Road. So this lot is nine tenths of an acre, so just under an acre. And here's the zoning map, so you can see the property is on C3, and it does touch the Laverne 2000, which is this green color, which is on R3. So of course, C3 zoning allows upper-story residential units, and C2 does not. So that's why this was rezoned back in, back last year, about six months or eight months ago. And here's some site photos. This shows the high voltage lines, the TBA high voltage lines. And that's looking toward Davidson County. And the next photo, this is KFC in the distance. And slightly different view there. But anyway, getting to the plan. So that was last workshop plan, and then this is the newest plan. And one thing that's been added, so I'll go back to the old one. You see, there's not any notes here under this legend. And you can see there's been a whole lot of notes added to this newest addition. You probably noticed, one of those notes talks about exterior materials, so they've already called that out on the plan and said that the exterior has to be some type of masonry material, either hardy board, brick or stone. That's one of the comments. And they also, I think, made some comments about how many lots, how many units and that sort of thing. There's some other changes on the plat. You'll notice behind these units, looks like they're using some kind of pervious pavers back there. So that's a little bit different, maybe, than two weeks ago. All the other comments have been taken care of. They are providing 21 parking spaces. That's three per lot. So that's how they get to 21, and then they're adding one ADA space. So there's 22 lots, excuse me, 22 parking spaces being provided. And that completes the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions for staff or the developer, the board?
One question, Mr. Chairman. If we can invite the engineer up if you would, please.
Mr. Womble, if you would, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Danny Womble, 216 Centerview Drive, Brentwood, Tennessee.
One question. On unit number two, which it would appear that one closes to the road, what is the setback from the front of the street?
10 foot.
10 feet?
10 foot.
And the rest of them start to go back from there. Would that be correct?
Correct.
Okay. And with the sidewalk is five, six feet.
Right. In front of unit number six, we've got the dimension on the sidewalk, and it's wide five feet. The workshop, we've changed it to six feet.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Womble.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to approve as submitted. Minister Rutley, do we have a second?
Well, second.
Second, go ahead and call them in coats. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to our next item. Item number four. Final plat bowling subdivision revision number one. Revision to setbacks requested by Womble and Associates. Property located on Hoffel Lane, tax map 14K, Group A, parcels 19.01, 19.02, 19.03, and 19.04. R1 low-density residential zoning district and PDR, planned density residential zoning district, property owned by Adnan Shreveman. Mr. Logan.
So this is a request to make a revision to a final plat that was approved by a planning commission last year. So this is the bowling subdivision, and it's a total of four lots. You can see here on the screen. So this development behind is Sandhill Village, and this is Cash Court that comes around to the west of this property. And zooming in here, you can see the four lots that were created. Again, this is approved in the last year by the planning commission, and so this ask is fairly minor. They're wanting to change the setbacks along Fergus Road. And last month, we discussed in more detail what they're trying to do. Looking at the zoning map here, so you can see again the four lots. And Sandhill Village is zoned R2 PDR, which is this darker color. And then, of course, there's R1 to the north on Fergus and the south, as well as across the street on Fergus. And here's some photos that were just taken this week. So this is taken from Cash Court, the interior, or what I'm calling the interior of these houses. So you're looking toward these homes that front Cash. And you can see in the distance, there's the roof line of the other two. So a total of four. And then these pictures are taken from Fergus Road, and you can see the fronts of those They're not the actual fronts, but they look like fronts. So that's good for Fergus Road. And then one more view here of the other home, sort of a close-up a bit. Again, you can see these homes in the rear are nearest to Cash Court out of Sandhill Village. So, and then this is the plan, the old plan from the workshop, and then the newest plan that was submitted by the applicant. So you can see that they're proposing to move the setbacks along Fergus. One thing that that will accomplish is there'll be a uniform setback along the homes there on Fergus Road. There's other things that are being accomplished with the change, but that's one of them. And there really weren't, since this is really a minor ask, there wasn't any technical items to pick up two weeks ago. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Any questions or comments from the board? If none, we will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to our next item. Item number five. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and all the man resigning of property requested by SEC, Inc., 0.49 acres, property located at 396 Old Nashville Highway, tax map 17, parcel 23. Current zoning district, R1 low-density residential zoning district. Proposed zoning district, C2 highway service commercial zoning district. Property owned by Alicia Rafique Etukh, Christian Youssef. Mr. Logan.
So this is a request for rezoning at 396 Old Nashville Highway. And this property is located near the intersection of Jefferson Pike and Old Nashville Highway, and it's outlined there in blue on the screen. And zooming out, you can see the intersection of Jefferson Pike and the Shell Gas Station is on the other corner, and then I believe that's the Fitchell Pharmacy directly across the street, well, almost directly across the street from this rezoning request. So the next-door neighbor is a strip retail center, and I'll show you that here in the photo. So this is the retail center that's next door, and it is zone C2 already, which is the same zoning that the applicant is requesting. So let me go back to the zoning map. So I misspoke. It's zone C3 next door. All of these are zone C3, not C2. So the gas station is C3, the pharmacy is C3, and then the restaurant and retail strip center. And then, of course, there's a mix in the area of other residential zonings. So the other photos of the site, currently, there's a single-wide mobile home located And here's a photo of it. And there's a driveway to it, and of course, you can see a privacy fence that butts up next to the single-wide mobile home. And then the next-door neighbor going north and west is a single-family home, which you can see there in the photo. And of course, the other neighbor here to the left is the restaurant and the strip So there are, as you might expect, several zoning classifications already existing on Old Nashville. It's really a wide array of zonings, which you might expect on that road, being that it's a major thoroughfare. So there's C3 in the area, there is C2 not far up the road, and then, of course, R1 and R2. So there's really just about every type of land use that you can think of. Let's see. I think I talked about the neighbors being zoned single-family. Also, this neighbor here in the rear. So on the screen is the exhibit, rezoning exhibit they submitted that shows, you know, possibly what they would like to do in the future. And of course, it's not tied to the rezoning, but it is an exhibit that they submitted. There is an existing cemetery, you probably noticed already, but that's touching the property on that southeast side. And so any development there in the future, of course, they would remove the single-wide mobile home. And I'm not sure there on the concept plan, of course, it is a concept plan, but some of those landscape buffers and transition buffers would have to be looked at. And of course, that would be done at the site plan phase. But at any rate, that is what they submitted, and that is in your packets also. And that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board on this item?
Mr. Logan, if you would. So the application or our agenda shows C2, and the drawing shows C3. So what is their intent?
I believe it might be best to ask the applicant what they want there.
If we could have somebody on this application, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Brian Grover with SEC 850, Middle Tennessee Boulevard.
Thank you, sir.
Rafique, if you'd like to jump, you're more than welcome to.
Yes, please. Name and address as well, sir.
Rafique Galishah, 2101 Oak Springs Place, Long July, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
So the proposed zoning was the C2. I'm trying to follow you along here. If we put C3, I apologize, but were you seeing that out for the C3?
C3 is the neighboring property, correct?
Okay. So I apologize. That's actually the label. We want to move that for the next-door property, because that is a C3 right there.
Oh. So I'm assuming this is a claret clear? Mr. Logan?
C2 is what the application says.
Yeah.
And that's what they want.
The C3...
And I put, the slides go right from their application. So that's what they submitted.
The zoning C3 you're seeing on this plan is actually labeling the surrounding zoning of that lot next to it, which is currently zone C3.
If you would, please, sir.
Yeah.
Basically, you need to go line. Well, it's got an arrow on that one, doesn't it?
Well, it's got an arrow here for loading and unloading, but it, the way, the way it is, it looks like it.
This is a separate. Okay. Got you. Got you. Okay.
So it is C2.
Okay. So with C2 being defined, from the applicant, what's what you plan to put there? And I know this is zoning, but what do you plan to build there, and what's your intent?
I don't have, like, something specific in mind, but having Old Nashville Highway actually is actually getting, you know, growing, and I see businesses all over. So I actually own the building next to it, the commercial one, the C3 one. And I don't have anything specific in mind, honestly, but I'm not planning on, like, doing anything like, you know, smoke or vape shop, nothing like this. My intention may be, like, a clinic, maybe. I would rent it a clinic if they want, if they want to. But that's about it. I don't have anything specific in mind, but it's, it would look a lot nicer than what it is right now, anyway, so.
I'm just a little confused on the C2, C3 between the two. That's, I think where my confusion lies right this second. So C Graham in his book, are you...
Yeah, there is a big difference between C2 and C3, and that's why I queried it of what it was. I mean, obviously, it does say professional services, not otherwise listed for C2, and that's obviously what it's leaning towards. But, you know, this is zoning, of course, but...
Any questions, Mr. Logan?
I just have a comment. I mean, I don't like the thought of mix-matching this area and adding more, not being consistent for what's already there, and then unknown for what is going to go there. So for the residents that are around that small area, that's very dense with that zoning. Did I say something wrong? Huh? Yeah, well, I just heard somebody saying, I just want to make sure I'm not saying something I shouldn't be saying. Thank you. I don't want to, I don't want to see that area get mixed-matched up, and then all of a sudden, we got residents that are around there going, why are we doing all of this? They have no idea of what's going on. That's my concern.
Fair comment.
And leading on with that, I mean, obviously, you're the owner. You understand that we are planning on widening Old Nashville Highway? I mean, we're going to widen, and you own the lot next to it, correct? That's what, yeah. So I mean, the issue that I run into is the junction of Jefferson Pike and Old Nashville Highway is very, very, very busy. And to put another retail in there is going to make it more very congested. If you could do something with both the lots, the one that exists in there now and the one you're planning, that may be a better idea for access. But just, that's just a comment.
Well... My other comment to add on to that is, when you start looking at your setbacks for that C2 area, if that's going to play into that widening and what you plan putting there?
Well, if you put a clinic or something in there, I mean, there is no clinics, there's not much clinics in Laverne, anyway. So if someone would be, I do actually have connection with, like, doctors and stuff like that. They're interested in, you know, in getting their clinics, like, having another branch here in Laverne. And that's why I came up with this idea. But if we put a clinic that's not a retail, you're not actually drawing more, you know, traffic to this area. You're not causing any danger to the residents in there.
I don't think that's what we're saying. I don't think you, what you're understanding is that it's already congested. And so when we widen that street, and then you shorten that lot because it's wide on top of the lot that's already there, because your drive at that location right now can't be more than 20 foot from the road, from the building to the road. If it's more than that, it isn't much. It's probably maybe 30 foot.
So for this lot specifically, we didn't account, I mean, the actual building itself is at the back of the lot. We gave ourselves, there's a 35-foot setback from that with, assuming, because at this point, Bo, I don't know if there is a set dedication for Old Nashville Highway in Laverne for the future thoroughfare plan?
80 foot. It's 80 foot total, so you'd be 40 from the center line.
Okay. And that is something we can definitely review and know that upon that road's widening, we will be 40 feet from there from the right away. And any type of parking that, or pavement that has to be redesigned to account for that will affect the overall usage of the buildings, because we do know it's limited to what type of services can be provided per square foot of building for parking, which would definitely be a limiting factor, and exactly what type of services can go into this commercial development.
I'm going to kind of pick up here then, a little bit. I was under the impression that it was a C2 next to it, so with it being two separate Cs is what, obviously seeing the confusion in my face when Mr. Logan was reading off the report. I really feel we need a little bit more discussion on that for these various issues, because with two separate zonings, you have two separate buffer zones, so that could cause a problem down the road. So are we sure that that's the zoning that you intended or want with your retail being in a C3 zoning?
The, if this was to be a C3, it'd actually more stringent buffers on this, because C3 has to be buffered from C3 based on your, that's correct, is what we were saying?
I'm sorry, C3 has to be buffered from...
Because C3 has to provide an actual buffer from C3 itself?
From C2. C3 to C2 and then to residential.
I would have to look that up. I don't, I don't have that memorized.
So let me answer your question there. Just know for C2, front yard setback is 20 feet. Two-thirds of the front yard setback must be dedicated to landscaping. C3, front setback is 35 feet. Side yard reduced to zero for C3, adjoining any commercial zoning district when unified development with shared parking is designed. So you've got some, I know you've looked at it, but that there are some other opportunities there, maybe that may be more suited to your land, I mean, plural lands, to lots, just a, just a thought.
You want to come back and ask for the fire? Would you like to entertain a deferral and maybe a little bit of homework?
I'm asking it right now, yes.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, so at this stage of the game...
I'll make a motion to defer.
We're going to make a motion to defer. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
We'll see you at workshop, and that'll allow you to do some homework, and let's get it hammered down before we go further.
Sounds good. Thanks, sir.
Perfect. Thank you. So items, on to our next items. Items number six, seven, and eight have been deferred. And item number nine, bonds and letters credit, sir.
Everyone should have a bond list in front of them. Everything is up to date. One of the things I'm still working on is the lots that are under construction and complete, so I'm hoping to have that finished up, and it will be actually accurate on this list next month. So any questions?
No, sir. Thank you. Any questions? Any questions or comments from the board? That, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.